This is a recording of the Southwood Public Library Board of Trustees. It is November fourteenth, twenty twenty three. Recording's going off mute, videos on, okay. We want to call Porter.
Sure. This is the meeting of the Southwood Public Library Board of Trustees. It's Tuesday, November fourteenth, and it's seven P. M. And in attendance tonight, we have Michael McMahon.
Tammy Saack, the salon.
Tracy Meswier.
Lynn Blair. And Cindy Warner is on Zoom.
Yep.
Okay, we don't have any public comments unless there's anyone on Zoom.
Uh, nope, just Cindy on Zoom.
Okay.
So for communications. We did the trunk or treat at Wally Park on October twenty eighth. That was really fun. We had a Ghostbusters themed car. A lot of people, really crowded, a lot of people recognized. It was myself and Molly, our children's librarian. So a lot of kids recognized Molly, which was really nice. They were excited to see her. It's like seeing a librarian out in the wild. You do exist. We do it just outside the library. It's great.
It's like we used to see teachers in the grocery store.
Yeah, yeah. We do exist. So it was really fun. We had a lot of kids. They recognized us. They recognized the library. You know, unfortunately, we did not win the raffle for the best car. But you can't beat the fire department. And somebody else had a really cool one. So that's all right. We had fun. We had fun. And then, so we are nearing the end of the Western Massachusetts Library Advocates Library Road Trip. So. We've had some people come in from out of town to visit, check out the library. So it's been, it's been really nice to kind of see people from other parts of the state or other counties, other towns coming by to, to check us out. Heather Dunphy, our Assistant Director, just finished, well, not just finished, but this, and some of this is from our October meeting, too. So it's not, you know, some time has passed. But she finished the financial report that was submitted to the state, signed off by Michael. And then, as most of you know, the Friends Basket Raffle is going on right now. Seems to be just as successful as ever. People really love it.
Yep.
And then, lastly, I just got an email like yesterday that we were approved for our state aid in the first round of grants. So our total is for the first award, twelve thousand nine hundred and ninety-six dollars and ten cents. And I can read that off again, Tammy.
Twelve thousand nine hundred and ninety-six dollars and ten cents.
Nine ninety-six, ten, yep. Yeah, she's, I'm so impressed. I would need like to read that off to me like two or three times. So, yeah, and then our, our next grant, we usually expect the second half in like March or April. So that's a really fantastic amount that we are very happy for. That was what I had for communications. Minutes, I have the September minutes. I'm gonna steal one for myself. And then I just did this up for October. So if anybody was looking for our October minutes, they would know that there is no forum. Just make a pile with any extras. I'm gonna try sharing my screen. I know Cindy usually joins on Zoom. That, no, I didn't have the September minute saved in there, but I had the October one, so.
Make a motion to approve them. September minute?
Do we need to approve the October, too? Or should I just post it?
Yeah. All those in favor?
We need a second, right?
Yeah. Yep, thank you, Tammy.
Michael, yes.
Tammy, yes.
To rotate. There we go, that's a little better for Cindy. Okay, so we have the director's report. I have the ones from this is September. October's. Oh, I'm just gonna scroll a little bit Cindy in a sec so you can see.
Okay, yeah, cuz all I can see is your menu. I can't see.
And then, of course, I scanned it the opposite way. Let me move that around. And this, well, that was September's before this is October's here.
Wow, numbers look really good.
Yeah, happy with them.
Seem to be a lot of cars in the park, I think, this morning.
This morning. This morning. What did we have? Oh, we had book club this morning.
Oh.
Yep. Okay, if there is no more questions, then I will move on to our next item, which is the old business, the event registration software. We have officially signed up for Eventkeeper, which is the online event registration tool that I talked about in September. So we have signed up. Our staff have accounts. We're officially going to start with the January events.
So is there supposed to be anything on the screen that I was?
Eleventh. I have a December eleventh deadline of all of our staff are gonna get all of our January events on there. And December eleventh, we're officially gonna kind of make it go live so people can register online. The trick is, is it doesn't. We, we have our library events calendar on the town website homepage, which is fantastic. We don't wanna mess with that. And there's no really good way to kind of integrate our new calendar into that. So what I'm gonna do is I'm just gonna put, you can make something be like every day of the month. So instead of putting our events into places, I'm probably just gonna have our calendar online, just direct people right to Eventkeeper for a full listing of events. So we won't need to put things into places cuz that'll just get too complicated.
Calendar that's on the town website.
Yep.
People person will click on library calendar.
Yeah, yeah, so they would click on the library calendar. They'd be like, what day? They'll click on a day and it'll say to view, you know, I'll work out the wording to be something very clear, clear, easy message to view the library events calendar, click this link for Eventkeeper, and then they can register there and.
So now will you only be able to get it at the town website? Or will you be able to get it on the Southwood?
Oh, yeah, yeah, you'll, you'll get it on the town website, our specific page. And I can link it out under like emails, social media. So, so we'll be able to blast it out everywhere. And then hopefully, we'll kind of work out all the, all the issues with it. January's a good month because we tend to like have low-key stuff in January cuz it's the middle of winter. You know, people don't wanna venture out much. So it's usually very chill. So we figured that would be a good month to kind of start with, to get our feet wet and just, you know. We always, they're always like with new things, we anticipate a few problems that pop up. So we'll be able to tackle them. And then, you know, when we're still using it come summer reading event time, we'll be able to handle the larger events hopefully with ease. Okay, any other questions about Eventkeeper?
Can't wait to see it.
Yeah.
I know it's gonna be exciting.
Yeah, people have really been asking for a way to register for events online. And I think it'll just make things so much easier than, as Tammy knows, when you register, we have the, the binder and we have to find the right page. And then people write things in there. And then I can't read people's handwriting.
People still, cuz you're not some people that just don't wanna do that.
Oh, yeah.
Are you guys able to do it online?
Yeah, what we'll do is we'll just be able to, um, because we're basically taking the same information like we would if we registered them the old-fashioned way. You know, name, email, phone number. So people can just take that over the phone and we can just plug it in and register for them.
So can I, can I go back to like meeting minutes? Because the last minutes that are on the town website.
For you all.
Can anybody hear me? Can any, can anyone hear me?
The photography policy that we created back in the beginning of twenty twenty-two. That is the original that Mike has. This is the suggested change. So Cindy, I have the, um, let's see, did you put something in chat? Oh, I can't hear you, Cindy, no.
Right.
If you put stuff in chat, I will keep an eye out for that. I don't know what it is. I don't know if it's us or you or.
They are not on the town.
So I'll keep an eye on the chatting if you need to put something.
No copies were.
So this is the, this is the original photography policy that I have up on the screen, the one from January twenty twenty-two. I decided to take another look at it because we, we've been hearing a lot about the First Amendment audits. And we wanna make sure that our policy is. The meeting minutes, I did, I just did the meeting minutes this afternoon. So I did not get a chance to send those to you, Cindy. But there are, on the town website, we have the past meeting minutes. I don't post them until they're approved by the board. So I did not, I was not able to send you the. Yeah, they go back to July eleven. That's the most recent ones we have online because we didn't meet in August. And then the September minutes, we just approved tonight. So I'll get those posted tomorrow morning. So this is the original policy that we have. And like I said, I wanted to take a look at it because with all the stuff with the First Amendment audits going on, I wanted to make sure that our policy doesn't, you know, mesh as well with that. So what I did was I wrote to Maura DeeDee at the Massachusetts Board of Library Commissioners. And I'm scrolling down, Cindy, did I put a new one on here? I did not. I thought I saved it. Oh, yes, there it is. Yep, so this is the new one, is the second page I sent around. This is the one that includes some new language that Maura from the MBLC suggested we include to just make it mesh well with, you know, everything that's going on with the First Amendment audits. The only addition that I would suggest from what she had sent was two, three, in the third paragraph down, where it says, anyone who wishes to take media at the library are responsible for obtaining. And I would just add any needed or any necessary permissions in there because, you know, with First Amendment audits, people can come in and film. So there isn't necessarily a need for them to ask for permission. However, you know, if we have somebody coming in from the news or something, they may have certain permissions that they need to ask for. Hopefully that makes sense. That was.
Just to add to that, I've been here for some of those, the craft events, when they have come. And they, the ones who have shown up, I've never heard them. I've never seen them be like, they've always asked.
They're very professional. Yeah, absolutely. They're extremely professional.
For my line of work, I definitely appreciate them.
Yeah, absolutely. So what I'm proposing is to just update our photography policy with the suggested changes from the MBLC as well as to include that line that for obtaining, just to note that there's any, any, I'd say, any necessary, any necessary permissions. Because sometimes, obviously, it's a public place. There is no permission needed. They can film. But, you know, as Tammy mentioned, sometimes there are situations where.
I make a motion to accept the new policy?
All those in favor? Michael, yes.
Tammy, yes, and Tammy seconds.
And Tracy, yes.
And Cindy, you can just pop and chat, or you can give me a thumbs up, whatever works. Yeah, that's a yes from Cindy. Wonderful. Okay. Go down to the photo release form. This is something that, kind of building on. And this is something that isn't in our, it isn't in our policy handbook. I can potentially add it if you see a need for it. But the photo release form, the way it's worded is it's only, the way it's worded looks like it's only for parents and children. So what I would like to do is just to edit, edit the form so that, you know, it'll include if it's, if it's just an adult signing for themselves and then have something for the children down below. Because the way, the way it is right now, it's only the parent signing for the children. But I need to be able to use it for adults as well.
Do we have to approve that?
Well, if do we want to add it to the, the policy handbook?
Sure.
I might recommend that. So it's, so every desk has a copy of it and there's a, a copy, you know, that we can make copies of if we need to.
You won't be taking photos and using A.I. to create.
No, you know, I, I avoid taking photos of people, you know, like when we do the craft programs, I just have people line their stuff up and just take pictures of the actual prep. I don't, I don't wanna mess with taking pictures of people cuz there's too much signing of forms and whatnot.
I just have a suggestion that versus a parent signature, you want, just wanna put slash or guardian? Or legal guardian?
Yep. Thank you, Tammy. Yeah, so if, if everyone's in favor, I will edit this form to, you know, hereby give consent for the South to use my photographs and then kind of separate it so it's clearly, you know, if it's an adult signing for themselves and then have the information down below if it's an adult signing for their children.
Can I make some motion that the photo release form be edited as Lynn stated to allow parent, I'm sorry, to allow adults to sign for themselves and to be included in the policy handbook?
All those in favor?
I second and all in favor.
Michael, yes.
Tammy, yes.
Tracy, yes.
That was a yes from Cindy, too. Okay, um, next item is our renewal for the Greater Westfield Chamber of Commerce membership is up. The membership renewal is three hundred and seventy-five dollars. And we did it for the past couple of years. And is it something that you feel that we should continue? We did at the beginning, we attended, we attended some events as a new member. A lot of the times, the events are at times I just can't make it to. It's, it's nice to be included in, you know, their, their mailings and in their directory. But, you know, since, since it is kind of an expensive renewal, I just wanted to run it by and see if anyone had any thoughts. Usually, we pay for it out of our, it's either our state aid or gift account. I think we use our state aid for that.
Did you feel that it helped make any kind of community networking connections at all or?
I mean, somewhat, you know, we did have one of their after-five events here, maybe a year or two ago. So, I mean, yes.
My next question is, do you think it would help now that you have like the fifty and over thing and you have the new, I forget what it's called, for the business thing? That that'd be something to host local businesses or even a career fair for kids?
Yeah, I mean, I mean, one of, one of our goals in our strategic plan is to offer more like job and career programs and such for the teens. So, I mean, it may not be a bad idea to, to continue on with it so we can kind of.
I would like to see, maybe, and this is just me.
Yep.
Another year and see if that helps with that at all.
Yeah, that sounds, that sounds fine to me.
How do you make it?
If you feel, I guess I feel, are you benefiting more from it? Is it worth the money? And you feel like you're benefiting from it? Or do you feel like it's not enough for the price?
I mean, well, why don't we, I like Tammy's suggestion of trying it for another year because we just got, you know, John, John only joined as the other librarian in January. And, you know, it takes, it takes a few months to get accustomed to the job and everything. So if we give it another year, then that way he can kind of explore that as he's working on creating career programming for the teens. And then we can reevaluate when it comes due next year and just, you know, see if that's.
Yeah.
Yep, yep.
So it's like price versus benefit.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. Yeah, I think that's a good plan, Tammy. Okay, um, so I will renew that. The next question I would just like to propose to the board is our holiday closings. So usually what we do is because our full-time staff get holidays, Christmas Eve and New Year's Eve are both half-day holidays. Usually, they vote to choose a day to smush that into one and have an entire day be closed.
So can you repeat that one more?
Oh, yes, no, no.
Christmas?
Yeah, we're, we're looking at closings for the Christmas holiday. So our, our full-time staff get a half-day paid holiday for Christmas Eve and New Year's Eve. So usually, like with last year, it depends on the way the holidays fall. Like with last year, we had, we had two days that it could potentially be. So I kind of pulled the staff and said, would you prefer this day off or this day off? This year, however.
Monday.
Well, yeah, this, this year with the way things fall, Christmas Eve and New Year's Eve are both on a Sunday. So we owe our full-time staff a half-day holiday for each of those. Monday, obviously, we're closed for Christmas and the following Monday, we're closed for New Year's Day. However, it doesn't, I mean, and we couldn't be closed on Saturday, the twenty-third, because our full-time staff don't work on Saturdays. And it, to me, it would not make sense to be closed on December twenty-second and then open on the twenty-third. And also, the kids are in school that day. So, you know, if they need somewhere to go after school before their ride comes. And it also, to me, does not make sense to be, to be closed January second. Holidays are over, you know what I mean? So it's kind of looking like the only, the best, the best day would be to be closed Monday, the twenty-fifth, and then be closed Tuesday, the twenty-sixth for that holiday. And I believe, I believe that's what the town hall is, is doing as well. So I just wanted to run that by you all. So we would be.
So that would cover just, so if you close full, fully for the Tuesday, the twenty-sixth, that kind of put both half-days together.
Half-days together, which is, which is what we tend to do.
That's what town hall tends to do.
And part-timers have no problem with the twenty-third?
No, I, I haven't, I haven't asked, but I, I can't imagine that they would. And unfortunately, with the part-time, they don't, they don't get any holiday pay or anything like that. So usually, usually what I do is, is I have an open door for any of the staff if they want to make up any of the hours. You know, cuz if it's hard for the part-time staff, cuz if we're closed a lot of the days, then. So, so they can check in with me, you know, if they want, you know. It'll be quiet, so we'll probably have plenty of background projects to work on. So if they're gonna make up any, any of the other time anywhere. And people always take time off, so we'll have shifts to cover. So.
I think that sounds like the best possible plan that.
Yeah, I mean, it makes the most, it makes the most sense. I'd just like to run it by you anytime we're closed.
Even though, you know, kids will be on vacation, but the day after Christmas, they just wanna be home playing with their stuff.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's the best.
And January, January second, everybody's moved on.
Yes, everybody's ready to just be, yeah.
Yep. Okay, wonderful. Next thing is, is an interesting. So we received word from a patron. They, they want to donate or they're interested in donating a Webster dictionary that's over a hundred years old.
Oh, wow.
And of course, with something, I, I looked it up on like eBay and you can never really get a, get a good idea because people mark things up like crazy. So, I mean, I'm not, I don't deal with historical items. I don't know how much it's, it's genuinely worth. I think it depends on the condition or the edition or.
Can you contact a Webster company?
You could. I mean, my, my only question is, is, is this the place for it? I mean, we don't have the, the proper, if it really is something valuable, we don't have the proper storage. Or, I mean, you know, what, what do we, what do we do with it? You know what I mean?
I can picture it sitting there being open inside a plastic case.
Yeah.
Yeah. Right, because you certainly don't wanna, I would be nervous touching it. I don't wanna, you know.
Well, I mean, and I don't really, I, I tried to contact the patrons and I haven't heard back to just get an idea of the condition of the item. I don't know the condition that it's in. It could be really good, it could be not so good. But.
Just don't know where it would.
Yeah, so that's why I, of course, with something that could be potentially, you know, expensive, I wanted to run it by you guys. My, I'm of the opinion that this is just, it's not the place for it. I mean, you know, thank you for thinking of us, but we just don't have the, the storage. Or if, if it's a really rare, special edition, I mean.
Does the Athenaeum have a, I know some libraries have a rare book room.
Yeah, I mean, so maybe.
History runs.
Yeah, so maybe, and they have, they have a pretty. Yeah, so I, I can potentially, when I get ahold of the patron, I can just kind of direct them to maybe the Athenaeum or, or some other, usually the larger libraries have like, you know, some kind of, of rare books or.
I'm gonna say that the Springfield History Museum, they have Webster as part of their, like.
This is a Webster fairly local. Yeah, 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 yeah.
So maybe there, they might take it cuz they have archive, like downstairs, they have stuff, too.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, they have like a whole little, like downstairs, like you said, yeah.
Yes.
Or the Springfield library, wherever. They just have more of a, that's where they're from. If it was like something that was created, published here, I'd be like, oh, let's figure this.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, yeah, if it, if it had some type of like really good local connection, absolutely. You know, but I mean, I just don't think we have. If it's something that's genuinely worth something, we don't have the, the means to take care of it properly.
Just being Springfield just because.
Yeah, definitely, definitely. I will do that. Okay, um, we're gonna cross the Civic Fund Winter Forest off because I read online that they are full up for indoor trees. So we can, we can maybe try that next year. The next thing on the agenda, if all of you know, our, our gallery here is run by Janine Laporte. Do any of you know Janine? She's, she's extremely, extremely sweet and she has run this, I believe, since two thousand five or two thousand six. And she is ready to give up the coordination of the gallery. She'd like to move on to some other things. So we have no gallery coordinator. It's, it's kind of a volunteer position, so. What? What we, well, first of all, we should probably think of something really nice to do for Janine because she's run it for such a long time. Um, she handles all of like, she finds the artists for the galleries, she sends out reminders, she sends out paperwork. It's, it's really involved. She gave me her files. Files, yeah, there's, there's, there's a lot more to it than, than you realize. Um, so is, is there something like nice that we can do for Janine? I mean, if we want to do, I don't know if we want to do like reception or if there's, I mean, I just wanted to.
I was hoping to see if maybe like a smaller reception, just like, thank you, Kate.
Yeah, yeah.
I don't, I don't know her, so I don't know what her interests are.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, I mean, I can, I can touch base with her and just see, you know, obviously she'll need to know, it's not a surprise, she'll need to know the date.
Yeah, she may not even want that.
Yeah, so maybe, um, maybe I'll, I'll see if she wants to do just like a small thing with like the staff and maybe the trustees and friends. And we can get some people involved and do like a nice cake, is like a send-off thank you. Um, because she has done it for a very long time and, I mean, the gallery is named after her husband, so it's. It's, it's a very, she, I don't think she, she's ready to move on to new things, but I think it's kind of hard to, to give it up. She's very, she's very attached to it, so um, and she's done a fantastic job.
She might need to help whoever takes over the whole bit ticket.
Now, that's gonna be the next thing, who's artistic that.
Yeah, so um, yeah, so I'll touch base with Janine, see if she, yeah. See if she actually wants to do it, and I'll, I'll, I'll say that it's, it's a small reception, you know, it's nothing, you know. We're not, some people don't want to be like the center of a all-out bash. So, I did, what, what we can do is, um, I did write to Pat to see if she had any suggestions for, from um. The, the artist showcase, was it in April that you guys do?
The cultural council, yeah.
I think she's, she sent me one person's name, so I guess my question is, how, how do we want to find the person? Do we want to try to see if we can get some candidates and have them meet with the board? Um, because it is, it is a fairly involved position. I mean, you have to review the artwork, you know, because obviously some people might. Some things aren't library appropriate, you know what I mean? So there's, there's a lot of consideration that goes to it.
Clear description of what the expectations are, responsibility.
Yeah, um.
Because usually they have the artist for two months, is it?
One, one or two months, it, it depends. Um, you know, if she had trouble finding somebody, she'd have somebody just stay for an extra month. So I mean, you really do need to find somebody that's kind of really knowledgeable about art and whatnot. And thankfully, I mean, she, Janine's created a pretty long backlog of like past artists, so we have people to work with. You know, and I could potentially, you know, write to a few of them, see if they're interested. But then it's just a matter of the selection process and how we want to choose, you know, the person that kind of manages this. Janine had a few, a few suggestions from past artists that we could potentially check in with and see if they're interested. But how do we want to narrow down? Um, Cindy asked, does this go on year-round every two months? So Cindy, um, usually the artists we have. Unless, like I said, sometimes there's some months where, um, where we can't find anybody. Usually artists are just displaying for one month, um, sometimes for two months if we can't fill a hole. So generally, I would say there's probably about, you know, if, if we had one artist every month, that would be twelve people a year if a couple people go extra months, you know. Usually we'll deal with like nine or ten artists a year. So um, I guess what, what I could do is I could kind of come up with a list of, of potential candidates. And then um, we, we obviously need to talk to people to see if they're interested. And then I suppose, I mean, what we could do is, is, is if they're interested, I could have them. Either come to a meeting or write a letter to the board just describing their qualifications and their interest in the role. Um, what do you guys think?
We could kind of have an informal kind of. Discussion with them, let's say, at the December meeting or the January meeting or whatever.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'd rather meet them in person than read a.
Read a letter, yeah, yeah. So I mean, I guess even if we have like a couple candidates that I invite to, um, you know, I mean, if, if we can get people. December is cutting it close, I think, maybe January or even February, you know. And then have a couple people. So Cindy asks, is there a history of who's been showcased in the past, um, details as what needs to be done? Yes, so um, Janine dropped off a whole. File of um, everybody we've had showing in the past. Um, there's, so there's quite a lot of people that we can draw on for new artists. Um, and details as to what needs to be done. Yep, um, I met with Janine about a week or two ago and she kind of detailed everything that she does every month. So I, I feel pretty confident that I can easily train somebody to take over. So yeah, I mean, if that's, if that's what you want to do, I can ask around to some people, see if they're interested. Um, you know, I'll just be obviously very transparent that there's, you know, there may be other people, invite them to the January meeting, you know. A little presentation about themselves and their experience.
Is this something that could be split between a couple of people as like a team?
Yeah, absolutely, yeah.
That way if somebody's busy one month or whatever.
Yeah, yeah.
Because it's volunteer.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It's very hard, you know, I mean, how hard is it for us to get a forum some of the time, you know? So, life gets in the way, especially with volunteering.
And this is a very involved project.
Yeah.
Yeah, so um, yeah, we can potentially split it if, if some, if two people want to work together. I don't see anything wrong with that.
Yeah.
Okay, wonderful, so I will work on that for, I'll aim for January, if not, we'll aim for February. I know the trick is, is um, she has somebody down for December and January, I think, so. She has somebody down, I'll have to check my notes, so. Either way, I think either we don't have somebody beginning in February or in January. Either way, if the gallery is empty for a month or two, I'm not gonna, I'm gonna lose sleep over it, we'll, we'll get back on track, you know, so. Um, next thing, I just like to always run by you. Our computer replacement schedule, anytime like I have a larger scale purchase that's coming up, um, I'd just like to run it by the board. The computer replacement schedule, um, I'm working with Jim Middleton, who is the town IT guy. And um, coming up with what computers we need to replace. Um, he may have a couple of computers that he can give us. I think he, he may have two, I need to check in with him again just to make sure.
Two new?
Well, they're not new new, but they're new enough. They're new enough, they're new enough, yes, so um. So as of right now, I'm looking at purchasing um, maybe three new computers and five new monitors. The total is looking to be about five thousand dollars with every, and this is, this is all from the quote, we've worked with Wally Computers every year. And this is again with Wally Computers. Again, it may change depending on if Jim finds that the ones that he has aren't gonna work. A lot of the monitors now are updating, so we have to, you know, we have to get more of them.
Computers, especially in a library, are important, and they gotta be updated.
Yep, so, so we're just, we're just waiting to see what Jim says, um, and then, and then we'll go from there. And as always, this comes out of our state aid account, so. Budget season requests, just a, a, a really um, brief thought as we're getting ready to, um, we're moving into the budget season. Usually I put that together December, January. I've heard from a lot of people that it's gonna be a very tight budget year. In the past couple of years, we have asked for, um, one year we asked for an additional position, I think I asked for like ten hours a week. And we didn't get that.
South.
Again, that one south, and then last year we asked for um, increasing one of the hours for our circulation staff and that didn't go through as well. Good, to be on, well, kind of the, you know, somebody who's, somebody who's um, kind of. The head of the circulation, that handles all the day-to-day aspects of that, and that, that wasn't voted through either. So as I'm kind of planning and looking at things this year, is it, is it worth asking for, for something again? I mean, if I hear from everybody that things are gonna be very tight, um. Do we, do we want to ask for it? I mean.
You're not gonna get any feedback.
Right, I mean, and, and the thing is, the more you say you need, like if you feel like, do you know what I mean?
Yeah, absolutely.
Obviously you guys have been running short for all this time, but the more you say you're short, at least it's at least letting it be noticed.
And the longer.
Right, and the longer, so hopefully eventually you'll get.
The alternative is, they say, oh, you didn't really ask for this, you know, so we just assume you don't need it.
Right, yeah, yeah.
But the, the, the reality of the town budget, if you look over the last three or four years. I know when COVID started, nobody knew was tax revenue gonna stay consistent or was it gonna drop or whatever? And then there were millions of dollars came in in federal money through Boston, that there's lots of money. The last couple of years, the town has had between three and four million dollars of free cash. They used to have about a million per year, but the last couple of years they've been flush. So then, when they're buying something for DPW or buying a new ambulance or whatever, they've been able to go out and say. We can just use the cash in the checking account, we don't have to issue a three-year bond or something. So money's been out there, although the school system last May had said to the town, well, we're gonna be looking for more money out of you. If the number of students goes down, we want more money.
Yeah, so I guess we, we can, I'll just, I'll just build it, build it in, you know, we're not, we're not hopeful, but.
But I think, I think one of the key things that we learned from last, I think it was last year, is we've got to nail down our numbers. So for example, you were asking for a new telephone system. And they said, well, how much will that cost? Well, I don't, I'm not sure, you know, if it's wireless, it might be.
Yeah.
You've got to give them numbers to work against, and then they can either say yay or that.
Yeah, yeah, I think we, we did give them, we did give them a number for the tele-, um, for the telephone system upgrade. But that was, that was shot down because of um, the cable or the, the wiring upgrade through, that the town's doing. So, to my knowledge, that's, yeah, because I, I remember we did have, we did give them a number and it wasn't, it wasn't a big number.
No, it was like less than two thousand.
Yeah, yeah, and it was, um, yeah, that was, we will, we'll probably try for. I, I, I'll need to figure out the details on that because it's, I mean, it's one thing is our telephone system hasn't been upgraded since two thousand and eight. You know, how, how long is this wiring project gonna take and, you know?
Careful what you wish for, we just got it, we just got a new one from Comcast. It's a nightmare. It's beyond a nightmare.
Yeah, so.
But it's whatever you're looking for.
Yep.
Have the numbers in your original proposals that you submit to town hall. Because otherwise, they have a hard time dealing with it, I understand.
Yeah, absolutely. And then just, just the last thing, um, as we're wrapping up. I have a copy of our action plan. That's my copy. I have a copy of the action plan, which is updates to our strategic plan. Um, so we have to submit one of these every year, um, submit it by December. And this just basically updates all of the um, objectives that we listed in our strategic plan and what we've kind of been doing. To, to work towards our goals. So you know, obviously, and I'll, I'll scroll through and I'll talk so Cindy can see it. Um, so obviously some of our actions, like we've created a marketing plan, we are looking for new ways to market and advertise our services. Um, we're working on collaborating with community partners. As part of the strategic plan, people also wanted um, a more variety of programming, so we've expanded the programming offerings. We were working on more like social programming and so like we did a board game afternoon. And I would think, you know, the, the craft programs are very social as well. We're collaborating with schools, our teen librarian and our children's librarian are working with ideas to work on that. Um, our teen librarian is also um, looking into different programs for teens, like a college prep program. Um, our teen volunteer program started up um, in October. So that's after about a year hiatus, that's actually longer than that, because I don't think we had it, we didn't have it during COVID. So it's, it's been on hiatus for a while, yeah, just making a pile. Um, collaborating with town organizations, we're working um, with different boards. Um, I do have one edit in here, the farm forum, obviously, they decided that they're gonna move it to town hall. But we are also gonna try collaborating with them on grant programs and such, so. And we're continuing to look to ways to do outreach programming. Um, I still do, unfortunately, I did not make the pop-up library session at the South Lake Village earlier this month because I was sick. And nobody, nobody wants to be around my jurors, so um. And then the educational services, we're, we maintain a diverse collection, we're working on promoting genealogy, local history. Job and career development, this is how we can hopefully tie, you know, the, the Greater Westfield Chamber of Commerce in as well. Our librarians are working on ideas for services to homeschool students, um, educational programming for teens. And then library funding staffing, um, you know, we stay up to date with grant opportunities, apply for those. We presented the strategic plan to the select board and um. And so on, and keep in mind that this strategic plan, since we, we had the meetings. Last year, this strategic plan just became active as of July first, so you know, I mean.
I think you're doing great.
We've made some headway, but we've, we've got a long way to go, so.
It's only been a few months. I think of what you've done so far, I think you've done a really good job.
Why did it get submitted to, uh, the Massachusetts Board of Library Commissioners? You can just call it the MBLC. Yep, so um, I'm just gonna make that note a change about the, the farm forum, uh, but we're gonna collaborate with them on other stuff. But I'll submit this tomorrow morning um, to the MBLC and then they'll approve it and I'll post it on our website. For anyone who's looking for a fun read. I don't know, we could probably pull statistics of how many people actually opened the link and I don't know, but um. So, so that's, that's kind of a, a little update on our strategic planning and how we're meeting those goals.
I really enjoyed being a part of this, it was a great group, a lot of diversity, ideas, age groups.
Yes.
Fun room, different areas in life.
Absolutely. And then that's, I think that's, that's all I had. Yes, seven fifty, yeah, um, so our next meeting will be December twelfth. As we said.
If anything changes, I'll let you know, I'll be there, but as of right now.
Tammy makes motion to adjourn.
Tracy seconds.
All votes in favor? Michael, yes.
Tammy, yes.
Tracy, yes.
I don't want to assume that that's a yes from Cindy, yes, it is a yes from Cindy, all right, we are done for the night. Okay, we'll see everybody December twelfth. Have a good night, Cindy, and thank you so much. Have a great Thanksgiving, everybody.